Moving on to recommended actions of the Integrity Commissioner Report. We have received a report from the Integrity Commissioner dated January 23, 2023. The IC report sets out findings that Trustee Stone breached the Board's Code of Conduct in several separate instances. Firstly, under the old code, through her comments about gender identity and expression at various Governance Committee meetings, the text of those comments is set out around pages 19 to 20 of the report. Secondly, under the old code, as results of comments made at the January 24, 2022 Governance Committee meeting, those texts of those comments is set out in pages 21 to 22 of the report. Thirdly, under the old code, through her retweets concerning race on April 18, 2022, the text of those tweets is also set out on pages 48, Exhibit 1. Fourthly, under the old and new code, as a result of various social media posts respecting gender identity expression issues, the text of those tweets is set out at page 48 to 52 in Exhibits 2 to 5. Lastly, even though the Integrity Commissioner has determined no findings or there was not a breach on a particular matter within the report, the Board of Trustees are required to make their own assessment and determine if there is a breach for each finding or non-finding. Having received the report from the Integrity Commissioner, the Board of Trustees must now make its own assessment of whether a breach or breaches of the Code of Conduct have occurred, and if so, determine the appropriate sanction or sanctions. It is suggested that the Board consider alleged breaches separately, and then, if the Board determines that there has been one or more breaches, we will consider the issue of sanction or sanctions. In accordance with the provision of the Education Act, Trustee Stone is entitled to be present at this meeting but may not vote. She's entitled to speak to a motion, as are each of the trustees. As Chair, I will remind trustees that under Section 5.12.5 of our consolidated bylaws, each member may speak up to twice on any motion, up to four minutes on the first time and up to two minutes the second time. We have not yet had the need to enforce that section since it came into force, as comments have been short, but we will be posting a timer, I believe, on the screen, and I will remind members of the time if need be. Before we do proceed, though, with the assessment and determination of breach of Code of Conduct, I will ask that Ms. Dolores Barbini, counsel on this matter, speak to the process that we need to follow.
Thank you, Chair Edwards, and good evening, everyone. I would just like to make some comments, some very important comments about process, and I will mostly be echoing comments that Chair Edwards has already made. The Integrity Commissioner has provided a report to the trustees about complaints brought against Trustee Stone, and in accordance with your Code of Conduct and the Education Act, as trustees, you are now required to consider and make a decision in response to the Integrity Commissioner's report, and you must comply with the provisions of Section 218.3 of the Education Act in considering and making a determination as to whether a breach or breaches have occurred, and if so, any sanction. In a separate section in your code, it reinforces this obligation, and I think it is worth reiterating, that the Board of Trustees must consider the report of the Integrity Commissioner, and the Board of Trustees must make its own assessment and determination of whether or not there has been a breach of the Code of Conduct, and if so, it may accept, reject, or amend the Integrity Commissioner's recommendations, if any, as to sanction. So, very importantly, tonight, the Board of Trustees must consider the Integrity Commissioner's report, and based on the contents of that report, make its own determination as to whether there has been a breach or breaches of the Code of Conduct, and if you as trustees find that there has been a breach or breaches, the Board must then decide on any sanction. So, just to be clear, the trustees must first make a decision as to whether or not there has been a breach or breaches of the Code based on the findings of the Integrity Commissioner report, and once you find at least one breach, you then must determine the appropriate sanction. The sanctions are set out in the Education Act and, sorry, confirmed by your Code of Conduct, which stipulates that the Board of Trustees may impose one or more of the following sanctions. One, censure of the member, which is really a formal disapproval of the member's conduct; two, barring the member from attending all or part of a meeting of the Board or a meeting of a committee of the Board; third, barring the member from sitting on one or more committees of the Board for the period of time specified by the Board. The Board of Trustees is to consider the Integrity Commissioner's report at a board meeting and is only entitled to enter into closed-session discussions if the alleged breach involves any matters described in Section 207a to e as per Section 20, sorry, 218.310 of the Education Act. Having reviewed the Integrity Commissioner's report, it is my opinion that Section 207 is not engaged, and therefore, the deliberations of the Board of Trustees regarding this report ought to be held in public. As Chair Edwards mentioned, the trustee is entitled to attend the board meeting but is not entitled to vote. The vote as to whether or not there has been a breach or breaches of the Code and as to any sanctions must always be in public. So, just in closing for my opening remarks, as pointed out by Chair Edwards, upon reviewing the Integrity Commissioner's report, there are six issues that need to be addressed by the Board of Trustees, and again, for each of these issues, the Board should be making a determination as to whether or not there has been a breach of the Code, and if so, what, if any, sanctions will be imposed. So, subject to any questions, I did provide a list of these six issues that should be determined by the Board tonight. It may be helpful to put them on the screen. So, I think those are the comments I wanted to make, subject to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barbini. We, and just before we go into deliberations, we'll deal with the issues first, and then, after we've had that discussion, we will then look at if there needs to be the sanctions or the sanction or sanctions after that, just for clarity. So, the first issue is on the screen, but it's basically whether Trustee Stone did not breach or breached one of more sections of 1.4, 6.1, 6.3, or 6.13 and 6.49 of the Operative Code of Conduct as a result of comments concerning gender identity and expression which she made at Governance and Policy Committee meetings between October 25 and January 31, as set out of the pages from 19 to 20 on the Integrity Commissioner's report. I have Trustee Oldfield.
Yeah, I was trying to get your, I was trying to get your attention before you started that, sorry. So, my question was more of a, was a process. You're, you just read what was on the screen there, but is the question, did, because it says whether Trustee Stone did not breach or breached, so it's, we're voting on this.
No, there's not a vote, it's not a motion.
No, 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 I understand that, but my question is, how will the motion, how would you like the motion structured? Because are we saying presumably the question's either going to be put forward as a motion, I move that Trustee Stone did, or I move that Trustee Stone didn't, and then the yays and the nays? I just want to be clear, however we're moving, whatever, some sides to move, right?
That's correct, and what we'll do is you look at the motion, trustee, a trustee can bring a forward of the motion based on that issue, whether they, whether it's, you know, I move that she breached or she did not breach, and then, we will have, we require a seconder, and then, we will have a discussion on that motion, that motion, and a voting on that motion. Trustee Cunningham.
I will put a motion on the floor. I move that Trustee Stone did breach one or more sections of 1.4, 6.1, 6.3, 6.13, and 6.49 of the Operative Code of Conduct, the old Code of Conduct, as a result of comments concerning gender identity and expression which she made at Governance and Policy Committee meetings between October 25 and January 31, as set out in pages 19 to 20 of the Integrity Commissioner's report.
Thank you, Trustee Cunningham. A seconder, please. Trustee Peniolo. Discussions. Trustee Oldfield.
Yeah, I would like to have the vote recorded, and just Chair, as a process, I'm going to ask this up for each one, so I don't know if you want me to ask every time we, we move through these, as the motions come up, but I am going to want a recorded vote.
Thank you, Trustee Oldfield. She has requested a recorded vote, so what that basically means, just for instructions for the, for trustees, is that we, Kathy Fitzpatrick will call trustees' names alphabetically, and then, with the Chair's name being last, and student trustees as well for the non-binding votes, so we have a binding vote and a non-binding vote that will be voted on. Okay. Trustee Morton.
My question is, do we consider only one motion, or do we consider six different motions?
As suggested, we will discuss the six different issues at, one at a time separately.
Thank you.
Any, any comments on the motion?
I, I was going to remove my question. Thank you, and through your chair, I wanted to know if we are able to have the example of the, or we're not allowed to share the breached code?
Understanding what the, the number of the code means?
Just specific, yeah.
Okay, so, just let me pull that up. I've got some of them. As far as 1.4 is trustee will support the vision and values and strategic priorities of Durham District School Board. 6.1 is transparency, accountability, and public confidence are fundamental components of the act effective governance of school boards as public bodies responsible to their communities and to the provincial government. The conduct of the member of the Board of Trustees must be of the highest standard and maintain the confidence of the public. 6.3 is trustees of the Board shall discharge their duties loyally, faithfully, and impartially in a manner that will inspire public confidence in the abilities and integrity of the Board. 6.13 is trustees shall seek to serve the public interest by upholding both the letter and the spirit of the law of the Federal Parliament and Ontario Legislature and the bylaws and policies adopted by the Board. And 6.49, all trustees have a duty to treat members of the public, one another, and staff members respectfully and without abuse, bullying, or intimidation, and to ensure that the work environment of the Board is free from discrimination and harassment. This provision applies to all forms of written and oral communications, including via social media. Go ahead, Trustee Miller.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other comments? Seeing none, then I will call the vote. Pardon? Don't have it? Oh, there it is, sorry.
Thank you. Through the Chair, I'll call the vote for trustees. Trustee Arsenal? Trustee Arsenal? I'll move on to Trustee Brown. Trustee Cunningham? Trustee Linton?
Sorry, excuse me, Recording Secretary Fitzpatrick, I think in a recorded vote, if we could have the members say in favor or opposed out loud so that it's properly recorded, thank you.
So, I'll start, I'll start again. Trustee Arsenal? Trustee Brown?
In favor.
Trustee Cunningham?
In favor.
Trustee Linton?
In favor.
Trustee Miller?
In favor.
Trustee Morton?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield?
In favor.
Trustee Panalo?
In favor.
Trustee Stone is absent. Trustee Thatcher?
In favor.
And Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, is that Trustee Arsenal?
Yes, sorry, my speaker isn't working.
And how do you vote?
How do you vote, Trustee Arsenal?
My vote is in favor.
Through the Chair, I will now call the student trustee non-binding vote. Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Trustee Kewitt?
In favor.
We have 10 in favor, one absent, and we have two in favor from the student trustees.
Thank you, that motion is carried. Moving on to the, the second issue, which is whether Trustee Stone did not breach or breached one of more of Sections 1.4, or 6.1, 6.3, 6.13, and 6.14 of the Operative Code of Conduct as a result of her pre-May 5, 2022 Twitter comments concerning gender identity as set out on pages seven and eight of the Integrity Commissioner's report. Trustees. Trustee Cunningham.
I move that Trustee Stone did breach Sections 1.4, 6.1, 6.3, 6.13, and 6.49 of the Operative Code of Conduct, the old Code of Conduct, as a result of her pre-May 5, 2022 Twitter comments concerning gender identity as set out on pages seven and eight of the Integrity Commissioner's report.
Trustee Thatcher, a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion from trustees, I would like to call the question or the vote. Thank you.
Through the Chair, I will now call the vote.
Sorry, if I could interject, the voting on the screen is slightly different than what Trustee Cunningham said. Just want to clarify, for the purpose of the record, the motion on the screen said that Trustee Stone breached one or more of Sections 1.4 and the remaining sections. Trustee Cunningham's motion, as stated, was Trustee Stone breached sections, so I just want to know, Trustee Cunningham, if you're alleging, if the motion is for all of them or for one or more of the sections?
I move that she breached all of them.
Okay, so then, yeah.
Just verifying, Trustee Thatcher, that you still agree with the seconded that motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Trustee Thatcher. No, any further questions? Thank you for the clarification, Council Carter. Okay, and we're going to call the question or the vote. It's a recorded vote, thank you.
Through the Chair, I will now call the vote. Trustee Arsenal?
Thank you, I agree with the, that there was a breach.
Trustee Brown?
In favor.
Trustee Cunningham?
In favor.
Trustee Linton?
In favor.
Trustee Miller?
In favor.
Trustee Morton?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield?
I don't see Trustee Oldfield on the screen.
She is reiterating.
Okay. Can we pass on Trustee Oldfield, and we'll come back to her when she gets back in?
Trustee Panalo?
In favor.
Trustee Thatcher?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield?
In favor.
Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Through the Chair, I will now call the student trustee non-binding vote. Student trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Student trustee Kewitt?
In favor.
We have 10 trustees in favor and two student trustees in favor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Moving on to the next issue, as whether Trustee Stone did not breach or breached one or more of the Sections of 1.2, 6.3, 6.11, and 6.44 of the Operative Code of Conduct as a result of social media posts concerning gender identity expression issues between, what was it, yeah, May 5 to the 14th of 2022, as set out pages 78 of the Integrity Commissioner's report. Trustee Peniolo.
Thank you, Chair. I move that Trustee Stone did breach all of Sections 1.2, 6.3, 6.11, and 6.44 of the Operative Code of Conduct, the new Code of Conduct, as a result of social media posts concerning gender identity and expression issues between May 5 to 14, 2022, as set out in pages seven and eight of the Integrity Commissioner's report. Thank you.
Trustee Brown, a second? Thank you, Trustee Brown. Any questions? Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question or the vote. It's a recorded vote, thank you.
Through the Chair, I will now call the vote. Trustee Arsenal? Trustee Brown?
In favor.
Trustee Cunningham?
In favor.
Trustee Linton?
In favor.
Trustee Miller?
In favor.
Trustee Morton?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield? Trustee Panalo?
In favor.
Trustee Thatcher?
In favor.
Trustee Arsenal?
I'm sorry, I was waiting to be back in the meeting, can you please repeat the vote?
We're, we're voting on the third motion? It's on the screen?
Yes, I see it now, in favor.
Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Through the Chair, I will now call the student trustee non-binding vote. Trustee Lauren Edwards?
In favor.
Trustee Gwen Kewitt?
In favor.
We have 10 trustee votes in favor and two student trustee votes in favor.
That motion carries. In regards to the fourth issue, whether Trustee Stone did not breach or breached Section 6.6 of the Operative Code of Code of Conduct, the old Code of Conduct, as a result of the content, content of her speech at the end of the January 24, 2022 Governance and Policy Committee, as set out in pages 21 to 23 of the Integrity Commissioner's report. Trustee Linton?
I move that Trustee Stone did breach Section 6.6 of Operative Code of Conduct, the old Code of Conduct, as a result of the content of her speech at the end of the January 24, 2022 Governance and Policy Committee meeting, as set out pages 21 through 23 of the Integrity Commissioner's report.
Thank you, Trustee Linton. Trustee Cunningham, I assume you raised your hand to second that? Thank you, Trustee Cunningham. Any comments or questions regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I will call the, the vote, the question.
Through the Chair, I will now call the vote. Trustee Arsenal?
In favor.
Trustee Brown?
In favor.
Trustee Cunningham?
In favor.
Trustee Linton?
In favor.
Trustee Miller?
In favor.
Trustee Morton?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield?
In favor.
Trustee Panalo?
In favor.
Trustee Thatcher?
In favor.
Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Through the Chair, I will now call the student trustee non-binding vote. Student trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Student trustee Kewitt?
In favor.
We have 10 trustee votes. We have ten trustee votes in favor, two student trustee votes in favor.
That motion carries. Onto the next issue, is whether trustee Stone did not breach or breached Section 6.49 of the Operative Code of Conduct as a result of the retweet she made concerning race on April 18th, 2022, as set out at page 48 of the Integrity Commissioner's Report. Trustee Thatcher?
I move that trustee Stone did breach Section 6.49 of the Operative Code of Conduct, as a result of the retweet she made concerning race on April 18th, 2022, as set out at page 48 of the Integrity Commissioner's Report.
Trustee Brown is seconding that motion on the floor. Any questions or comments regarding that motion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. It's a recorded vote. Thank you.
Through you, Chair. I will call the vote. Trustee Arsenal?
In favor.
Trustee Brown?
In favor.
Trustee Cunningham?
In favor.
Trustee Linton?
In favor.
Trustee Miller?
In favor.
Trustee Morton?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield?
In favor.
Trustee Panalo?
In favor.
Trustee Thatcher?
In favor.
Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Through the chair, I will now call the student trustee non-binding vote. Student trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Student trustee Kuat?
In favor.
We have ten trustee votes in favor, two student trustee votes in favor.
That motion is carried. Moving on to issue number six, where whether trustee Stone did not breach or breached of the Operative Code of Conduct, the old Code of Conduct, as a result of her comments regarding the definition of white supremacy in the in the then-drafted human rights policy, as set out in pages 18 and 19 of the Integrity Commissioner's Report. Trustee Brown?
I would like to put the motion forward that trustee Stone did breach did breach the Operative Code of Conduct, the old Code of Conduct, as a result of her comments regarding the definition of white supremacy in then-drafted human rights policy, as set out on pages 18 and 19 of the Integrity Commissioner's Report.
Sorry, trustee Morton, are you seconding that?
I would second that motion.
Thank you trustee Morton. Any comments or questions? Trustee Penello?
Thank you, Chair. I did want to speak to this motion, because I think it's important. Because important conversations are very uncomfortable and all of the motions are important, but I'm choosing this one specifically because of the definition of white supremacy and comments that were made around it. Because decolonizing our institutions and our communities and minds is very intentional work and it is very uncomfortable. But that's how it should be, because that's how growing pains work. I think here, the inherent difference is that when those who are marginalized and intentionally oppressed by systems and have been historically, are forced to debate their right to exist, there is an imbalance of power in these conversations and in these spaces. When we stop asking clarifying questions to understand and we start asking questions and listening to reply, instead of listening to learn, we force communities to defend their right to exist or to be seen or to be called out and specifically named. And that infringes on human rights and protected grounds, as we see. And, sorry. We infringe on human rights and protective grounds that clearly state that these people exist, have a right to exist and have a right to do so, free from discrimination and oppression, and that includes having to defend our existence. It's not up for debate and I think we clearly see it's a legislated fact, or else we wouldn't be voting on this potential breach today. I will say that any person's learning bias and curiosity is theirs to take accountability for, to do the labor of learning and unlearning. It is not the job of oppressed groups to educate you while defending their right to simply exist and be afforded equity that allows for equal outcomes. This goes for everyone, but especially those who, those of us here who are elected into positions of privilege, who have the increased ability and platform to cause real harm in their quest for a misconstrued weaponized form of quote-unquote "freedom." Freedom of thought, belief, opinion, and expression protects you from the government, not from the consequences of your expressions from the public and from the communities that were meant to serve. So when communities and those impacted seek remedy through the judicial system, tribunals, or an investigative procedure, like this one, it's warranted, it's crucial to accountability in a democracy, especially since these are the people who have entrusted us and granted us the access to these positions to even be here tonight. So tonight, we've determined already that there's been a number of breaches, and it's my hope that the communities watching at home and here this evening see and feel as though there has been due process, accountability, and the upholding of human rights by this board of trustees. So those are my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you trustee Penello. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will call the question to vote, the vote, and again, it's a recorded vote. Thank you.
Through the chair, I will call the vote. Trustee Arsenal?
In favor.
Trustee Brown?
In favor.
Trustee Cunningham?
In favor.
Trustee Linton?
In favor.
Trustee Miller?
In favor.
Trustee Morton?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield?
In favor.
Trustee Panalo?
In favor.
Trustee Thatcher?
In favor.
Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Through the chair, I will now call the student trustee non-binding vote. Student trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Student trustee Kuat?
In favor.
We have ten trustee votes in favor and two student trustee votes in favor.
That motion carries. Now, at this time, that we've found that there has been breaches of the Code of Conduct, the board shall make its own determination on a sanction or sanctions. As far as sanctions are concerned, the Integrity Commissioner recommends that the board censor center trustee Stone for breaches of the old code. The IC notes that the board can additionally choose to bar trustee Stone from sitting on one or more of its committees for a time period of its choosing, but does not explicitly recommend make explicit recommendations on additional sanctions. With respect to the various social media posts covered by the new code, the Integrity Commissioner invited the Board of Trustees to reach its own determination whether there was, had been a breach, and if so, there are any additional sanctions we might find appropriate or permissible under Section 218.3 of the Education Act. The Board of Trustees has no obligation to accept Integrity Commissioner's recommendations for sanctions. The Board of Trustees can accept, reject, or amend the sanctions recommended by the Integrity Commissioner. And again, just sort of a reminder, as far as, under the Education Act, the options around possible sanctions, it's the censure of a trustee, barring the trustee from attending all or part of a meeting of the board or a meeting of the committee of the board, and that means A means singular, or C barring the member from sitting on one or more committees of the board for the period of time specified by the board. I see trustee Oldfield's hand up. Before I do that, I would like to just pass it on to legal counsel, Ms. Barbini, to make any further comments around sanctions.
I don't think I want to make any additional comments, but I will certainly answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barbini. Any questions at this point in time before I turn over to trustee Oldfield had her hand up? Trustee Oldfield, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I move that trustee Stone be barred from all of the next board meetings except for February 21st. Is that the Tuesday? Might be the wrong date. 2023. That trustee Stone be barred from sitting on any and all committees of the board until October 31st, 2023, and that this board censures trustee Stone.
Just a clarification there, trustee Oldfield, because you mentioned all board meetings under the code.
I didn't say all board meetings. I said all of the next board meeting, because the language says all of the board.
Okay, sorry.
But I just said all of the next meetings.
All of the next board meeting and then all committee meetings? And sitting on all committee meetings and then as well as a censure?
Yes, sitting on, I think the words that, sorry, through you, Chair Edwards, I think the words that trustee Oldfield used was consistent with the wording of the act, which is barring trustee Stone from sitting on any and all committees of the board until, just for the purposes of the record, I think trustee Oldfield, you said October 31st, 2023?
I put it in the chat, if that's helpful.
No, I think just repeat it out, just repeat it out loud, I think is fine. You have it, Ralph? Okay.
Do you want me to repeat it? Sorry.
No, I think, I think it's coming up here.
Okay.
Yeah, and. Trustee Oldfield, is that accurate in terms of your motion on the screen there?
Uh, I'm sitting on any and all committees?
Yes.
Okay, so trustee Oldfield has put a motion on the floor. Trustee Linton, I need a seconder, please?
Just a question?
Yes.
Just clarity on the wording, that trustee, that trustee Stone, oh, sorry, no, it's just change. No, that trustee Stone be barred by sitting? Should that be by or from sitting? Just for clarity.
Yeah, I think that's just a typo, so it is, yeah, I think trustee Oldfield said barred from, so that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification, just as other process, I need, I have it, a motion on the floor. In order to continue with discussion on a motion, I need a seconder. I have trustee Penello on the speaker list, so.
I don't mind seconding, but I was going to ask a question as well.
Okay, so trustee Penello has seconded. All right, so I will let you go ahead with your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, my question is for trustee Oldfield. I was going to potentially move to amend the date stated or the committee's portion of the motion, but I just wanted to, I guess, ask trustee Oldfield first before making a friendly amendment, if there was.
Trustee Penello, there's no such really thing as a friendly amendment. The question is on the floor, so if you would like to amend it, that's, that's fine. We can do with an amendment. Thank you.
Yes. Am I able to ask first, though, for reasoning for that choice of date before I make the amendment?
Usually, well, yes, okay, thank you. Trustee, through the chair, will ask trustee Oldfield her reasoning around the the date of October 31st, 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I picked the end of October because it would seem to me that we would be electing committees again in November of 2023, and at that time, the board, trustee Stone would be able to stand, should she choose, and trustees would elect who they wanted to. So it seemed like a reasonable time to have her barred.
Okay, thank you, trustee Oldfield. Just a sort of a reminder, a definition of committees. When we say all committees, committees of the whole standing is considered a committee. So the standing committees, as well as any of the private sessions. The, basically, so when it says all committees of the board, that includes that as well, just for clarification for trustees. Trustee, so trustee Penello, you're fine then?
Thank you, Chair. I'll still move the motion that the date in the second part of the motion put forward by trustee Oldfield be amended to December 31st, 2023. Thank you.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor from changing the date from October 31st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. Seconder, trustee Brown? Any discussions on the amendment of changing the date from October 31st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023? Trustee Morton?
I'm not making a comment on the amendment. I have another question.
Okay, with the question?
The question is in regards to the first statement, that trustee Stone be barred from all.
Okay, trustee, trustee Morton, we're just doing with the amendment, we can hold that question for, because we will have a vote on the other one, if we could hold that question for a second. Right now, it's just the amendment, which is changing the date. Seeing none, can I have a vote, I call the question, on just the amendment to change the date from October 31st to December 31st of 2023? Can I do that by show of hands? Or check marks? Trustee Miller, you have a question?
Sorry, I was just distracted for a moment. Could you please repeat what you said?
All we are doing is voting on the motion, the amendment to change the date from October 31st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. After we do the amendment, if that goes, if that passes, then we will actually go back to looking at the main motion. Okay, so again, trustees, could you please either raise your hand or your X mark, your X, so that I can clearly see the that motion carries. So we are now going to have a discussion on the main motion, which includes the amendments of December 31st, 2023. Trustee Morton?
Thank you, and through you, Chair, my question is in regards to the first statement, that trustee Stone be barred from all of the next board meeting. So I'm curious, no, we're just talking then about the board meeting on Tuesday, February the 21st. Am I correct?
Yes, you are, trustee Morton. As the Education Act says, we can only bar from one of the board meetings, singular. So that is the meeting that we are talking about, the next meeting, which is the February meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Oldfield?
I'm going to speak to this motion, this mover of the motion. So, as trustees, I feel we're charged with ensuring public education is accessible to everyone and that schools are safe places to learn for everyone. And, you know, I think all of us, having listened to And, you know, I think all of us, having listened to the presentation at the, at the previous meeting this evening, can hear how that's not always the case. So we are required to adhere to the Antaria Human Rights Act, and the conduct of trustee Stone set out in this report is egregious. It not only violates the Antaria Human Rights Act and our own code of conduct, but even more importantly, it violates the trust of our students, their families, our staff, and the communities we represent. As trustees, we must hold ourselves to the highest standard. And, you know, I ask you, what would happen to any employee or student if they conducted themselves in this manner? Termination, suspension? So I think we must take action that reflects the seriousness of the findings in this report, which is why I purport the motion, you know, which is more than what the integrity commissioner suggested. But I think that if we don't, then we become complicit in the behavior. And for trustees, the bar should be higher, and we must hold ourselves accountable. If we don't, we're failing in our judiciary duties.
Thank you, trustee Oldfield. Student trustee Kewitt?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to speak on behalf of trustee Cameron, as well, as he is not able to be here tonight and ask me to do so. Trans rights are human rights, and they are non-negotiable. Trustee Stone's desire to have free speech is equivalent to advocating to deny these rights. Anti-trans rhetoric is harmful to the integrity of Durham District School Board and the people within it. I thank the integrity commissioner for their thorough report that prudently lays out how trustee Stone violated the code of conduct on several occasions. It's clear that trustee Stone failed in her obligations as a trustee and has been defiant to the concerns of the former director, the community, and the integrity commissioner. Accordingly, I absolutely support the motion here tonight, but I believe that this additional action is certainly required. So I would support a motion in barring trustee Stone from attending the entirety of the February 21st, 2023 board meeting, according to section 218.3 subsection 3 clause 2 of the Ed Act, which reads the school's obligation, sorry, the school board's obligation of barring the offensive member from attending all or part of a meeting of a committee of the board. I believe it is likely that trustee Stone will say that she's being canceled or silenced. That's because trustee Stone has not learned from her actions. Over and over again.
Point of order, student trustee Kewitt, could we contain our comments around the, as far as the, the motion, that is, as far as the sanctions, and limit that conversation around just that?
Yes, sorry, that comment was just in line with the importance of the severity of the motion we're passing tonight, just to say that it's important that we fulfill our duty in this as trustees, to show that we can be the bigger people here. And with that being said, we stand with this motion in the interest of barring trustee Stone from the entirety of the upcoming board meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Trustee Cunningham?
Thank you, and through you, Chair, I certainly echo what's been said by other trustees so far. I also wanted to say that we have just voted on six separate breaches of the code of conduct, and we are not just voting to sanction based on one, we are voting to sanction based on six. And as a result of, of a pattern, and the fact that there are so many breaches in front of us today, I do think it's important that we show serious sanctions, to show that it's important to stick to the code and not breach it even a single time, much less six. So I stand by this motion.
Thank you, trustee Cunningham. Trustee Thatcher?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. I do agree with trustee Cunningham. I feel that the conduct which we're speaking to this evening is completely unacceptable. The comments are insulting and demeaning, and completely do not meet expected standards of a trustee at the Durham District School Board. I'm not sure if this is the timing, but I would like to add, by way of a request, that we include some retraining around governance and the responsibilities of trustees, just to ensure that there is a complete understanding of what we're speaking to this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Thatcher. We will maybe have a discussion a little later at this point, about maybe a request, because under the Education Act, we have just the sanctions that we are allowed to do, but we can make a request if the board wishes, we can have that discussion later. Trustee Morton?
Thank you, and through you, Chair Edwards. The leadership of the Durham District School Board must instill confidence in our commitment to equity and our ability to champion human rights. We must serve our school community in a constructive and respectful manner at all times. Our actions and our words must be of the highest standard to maintain public confidence in our ability and our integrity. Our learning and growing environments must be welcoming, safe, equitable, and inclusive for all of our staff and all of our students. We do have to recognize that what we say and how we say it could negatively impact, could harm members of our community. I fully accept the report provided by the integrity commissioner, and I will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Morton. Trustee Miller?
In echoing the trustees that have spoken before me, I would just like to say again, as we've read this before, that harm considered is not only based of intention, but you can cause harm even without intention. It is very important to be very aware and mindful of our speech as we represent a whole, and one person's speech can represent, reflect the whole, and that also is quite unfair where we have not shared in some of the viewpoints of trustee Stone. And so I would like to remind her that it is important to acknowledge our integrity and the, our integrity and also the fact that having a right to speech is not a right when it is potentially very harmful to those you serve.
Thank you, trustee Miller. I've got trustee Oldfield.
Can I just ask, Chair, please, that this vote be recorded?
I didn't quite hear that, sorry, trustee Oldfield.
Sorry, I'm asking that the vote be recorded?
I still didn't get that, I'm sorry.
I think she was asking for the vote to be recorded.
Okay, so just wanted the vote be recorded. Thank you, trustee Oldfield, I apologize for that. Okay, so trustee Linton?
So just as a comment, why I'm in support of the actions taken by the trustees today by vote, we are in an age where communication is as fluid and as accessible as ever. As a board, I believe it is important for us to take a strong stance on how social media can be used to convey negative messages, especially with statistics that speak negatively to how our students from equity-serving, racialized, and communities of inclusion experience online bullying. Plainly put, there are parents who have had to mourn the loss of their child because of online bullying. As a board, I feel it is important for us to keep up with the innovation in front of us and identify training and capacity building regarding the use of social media.
Thank you, trustee Linton. I don't see any other members. Okay, so seeing no other people having their hands up, it was a request for a recorded vote. I'm going to, if we could put the motion back up on the, on the screen, if possible, just so that people can see it, but the motion on the floor is that trustee Stone be barred from all of the next board meeting, and that the student, trustee Stone be barred from sitting on any and all committees of the board until December 31st, 2023, and that trustee Stone be censured. Trustee Kewitt? Student trustee Kewitt?
I was just going to request that the student trustees have a recorded non-binding vote.
Yes, that's, it's a recorded vote, and I assume that it would be both a voting, a binding and binding vote.
Perfect, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Cunningham?
Sorry, I was just waiting for the vote to be called.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that, we're going to be calling the question or the vote, and it's a recorded vote. Thank you. And Kathy, if you could.
Through the chair, I will now call the recorded vote. Trustee Arsenal?
In favor.
Trustee Brown?
In favor.
Trustee Cunningham?
In favor.
Trustee Linton?
In favor.
Trustee Miller?
In favor.
Trustee Morton?
In favor.
Trustee Oldfield?
In favor.
Trustee Pinello?
In favor.
Trustee Thatcher?
In favor.
Trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Through the chair, I will now call the student trustee non-binding vote. Student trustee Edwards?
In favor.
Student trustee Kewitt? We have ten trustee votes in favor, two student trustee votes in favor.
That motion carries. Just again, to advise the next steps, as far as what happens once the breach is found, basically, the, a letter will be sent to trustee Stone identifying the breaches. She has 14 days to respond to that, and based on that, we will come meet again to basically, based on her, consider her response, and meet again to discuss whether, as far as the breaches and the sanctions are concerned. Any questions? Seeing none. That concludes our agenda for this particular meeting. I have a motion to adjourn. Trustee Pinello?